Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, you can stay in that drainage shed. I thought that did it.
Melody's here.
She's ready for the session, right?
She's coming back in thirty minutes, whatever time she's at.
She was.
You want to be in Piggy's office?
You want to see how all these indirect have her coming when she's here?
I should let her have this.
Did it work? Oh.
So then we have to go into your entry room?
Yeah.
Now you can come in this way. Oops, I'm not there.
Well, Melody's here.
Alright, so I need to go into drainage quick.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Rick's got one more item we're gonna go over quick. We have this Brad Gay deal going on. Melody, do you have some pictures that we could start passing around?
I do, and if I can. Let me just go.
We'll run through the pictures real quick.
My first day up there, I went through the town and there wasn't one basement, or one yard that wasn't flooded. There wasn't one house that didn't have one, if not two, hoses coming out of it. Now, a lot got done on Tuesday. On Wednesday morning, I met Jason.
Ben Dixon.
Ben Dixon, thank you. I was trying to pronounce his name. I met Jason up there. He took a look at it again. Scott Pedersen had his crew up there. So the first option was to dig down by the river. This is the southeast portion of town, and it's right up by the river. When they dug down, they got into sugar water. There was sugar sand in the water. They couldn't even get to the tile.
That's the main that's going up.
Right. If you go north from that area there, there's a housing. Housing and on the corner, I'm gonna have you look at the air conditioner. This is just a little bit of what I saw. There's pipes coming out from their basement, right next to their central air unit. It was gushing like a fire hydrant, right onto their unit. This one here is the pump that they put at the intake, right at that yard. And it went out to the field and headed southeast. This is the hose going out into the field. Eventually, what they, or Scott did was, he made a trench so that the water would flow. This is across the street. Jason went over and dug a little trench under the sidewalk, and it filtered out from there. Then, I'm gonna take you now to the...
You saw some of this Wednesday when you were up there, and I saw it again Thursday. By Thursday, they've got quite a set of parts moving down. And then that's when they went in and tried to figure out what's off.
Yes, and then they had Alan go in and do a little bit of trenching. He couldn't get very far. This is the house across the street, or right beside Alan to the east. You can see the hose coming out from the house. The next procession shows it going from that yard into Alan's. This is on the west side of Alan's? That's on the east side of Alan's house. On which side? Come east. This is the east side of town, or the west side of town? That's the west side of town. But they own two houses. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the west side of town, but this is the east side of his house. Okay, got it. This is some more of the flooding that's going on there. Next was they had...
Rick told me that, that day when I was up there, when you were there, Melody, he told me he knew exactly where the problem was.
And he did. He did.
Yes, he did.
He pretty much did. This here is where he's starting, and the reason I did this was you can see how far down down his bucket is. But he only got into that triangle across from his house. He couldn't get very far because of the frost, and his couldn't do it.
Yeah, his was.
Right. Okay, so then I went back up on Thursday. Unfortunately, the pumps had not been manned all night. This is kind of the before. That's kind of in the morning before we started. Yeah, this is after, this top one here, you can see the tile and the grate that Alan had pulled out from there.
Yeah, this is on the west, southwest of the town.
When I got up Thursday, the pumps, like I said, had unfortunately not been manned all night. They were shut off, so the water kind of backfilled up again. So, they decided then to take... And they had already opened up the hole, and they found it right away. They found the tree roots, and I have those pictures. Then they decided to go ahead and have Scott go over on the west side of town, and go ahead and just trench clear across that first triangle. There's the area behind the, to the east of where the co-op was, and it used to be the railroad going through there. Then they went across there. They went all the way through, and then they went... They trenched all of that. So, starting out, this is what it looked like in that triangle area beforehand. This is another area. And then, once they got the trenching and the pasture done across, you can see where it's broken up. And I apologize, I meant to have all these documented or timelined on it for you. This here one shows the water coming through, once they opened it up into the pasture.
Yeah, Jason with our firm has GPS with him, so he can check culvert flow lines and everything, and see where it would help to...
Yes. He realized that it was almost a foot difference between the culvert area, the tile going under the road by Alan's house, and over by the pasture. There was like a foot difference. So it should have, they knew at that point, it should have been, uh-huh. Then, here are the problem... Tree roots. And I am standing on the west side, looking east into the hole. They took a tree out to get access here. They chopped it. They took one tree out where the hole was, where they were actually digging the hole.
And they left the stump, correct? Or they dig the stump off?
I never saw a stump, so I can't tell you. And by the time I got back up there, the water, the water had backfilled. But they also got a larger pump. This here picture will kind of show you. This is out in the field, where the water's draining out, looking in. So right in here is the hole. This is, it shows you how they had to get back in. They put a larger pump on, and as you can see, it just flooded. And it looks like a river, that little trench that Scott had made. No, this was here, they went in both sides of it. There was one beside it.
They got a branch off here.
Yeah, they chopped that tree. We had the homeowner come out, and he was pretty excited that he could take them off, take those trees, doesn't care. You know, he was just, get it fixed. So that's what he was... Yeah. And then what's here one is more of, you can tell, once they opened it up towards the pasture, how the, how it just broke all the ice. And it was really neat to see was across from the original pump, where there was ice on top of the water in the yard. It had gone down three inches by the time I left on Thursday afternoon. You'd just see a shell of ice, and it was all empty underneath. So, the pumping was working. I talked to Jason this morning. One glitch is, they were, Scott was afraid that if they take an electric pump up there, hook it into somebody's house, and run it, if they blow it, then they're gonna blow their, their pump that they had in their house, and they didn't want to do that to a homeowner. So they were gonna have to wait till today to get ahold of Kim, to see if there was a direct access that they could plug into, and then just continually pump it out. And I haven't been up there yet.
Okay, Rick, so where are you on this? Okay, that's where you're at.
We had county maps and things, and we'd worked with Allison already because there was a, he had the contract to do lateral B. I can orient this same way. This, this Al's house, his east house, I'll call it, is right here. And that is on Branch B. He is under contract to replace Branch B up to the county road. And he got it, I think, as far as his house. Now, the main is just to the west, and then we've attempted to draw that location on here. And this is the location where the tree roots are solid. And just north of there is where Al hooked the new connection for Branch B into the main.
So that's already hooked in there?
Yes. It's, the new tile for B is hooked into the main here, in this location.
So that added more water onto that?
Yeah, probably because B wasn't functioning that well.
That's what I mean, when you set on it, and then all of a sudden, D was working.
Yeah, 'cause all of a sudden, does it get bad? I mean, I can't quite understand. Well, there's stories too, and maybe there was a problem when the connection was made, and who knows?
You know, there's about three of those houses, Leach Fields House. There's been a lot of movement over the top of that town. Who knows? There might be a broken one. When we dug where those two big trees are, that one big tree, those roots were going right down into the...
And you can see by the way, how far down in that tree was...
So I don't know if that's the only tree, if there's more issues. My concern is, there's a lot going on under the buildings, under the Leach Fields now, and foam line. Was it cost effective to reroute six, eight hundred feet of that?
Well, it might take a little more than that. The issue was, when they were pumping here, in the general area where that connection was, flow was coming. The tile are working north of there. We feel they're probably as good as they'll be. But from that point south is where the trees were. And that's where if you could repair...
And that's where they were pumping, in the south road, east-west road, correct?
Yes, 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 yes. So the flow was getting there.
So that's good to that one.
Yep. And I think what's been done will help the surface treatment, surface flows, and it may just be dressing it up a little, leveling the dirt, whatever. Most of what they dug, where they dug, won't hurt a thing. So let's take care of the surface water if it becomes a problem again. My advice to somebody local would be, sign a petition or whatever to repair this tile line, and you can repair it the most cheaply probably by just putting in a new one, the same size.
Right. And that's what you have to do, 'cause on a repair, you can't upsize it.
Right, right.
Otherwise, it's called improvement.
Exactly. Then it opens up a whole new can of worms.
So, I think what was good is we had Jason or you, somebody on board try to view this, 'cause some of this, you know, it's getting a little more in-depth, how far you go in Delville.
Yes.
What you're saying, I'm hearing the council's gonna meet.
Yeah, it's gonna lead.
Tomorrow night. And I was already on the agenda.
Yeah, Melody's on the agenda.
I was already on the agenda prior to that, so we're just gonna kind of, and it was okay with Kim that we, you know, if it's addressed, or if there's questions. Jason is planning on being there with me as well, to answer the questions correctly.
So if Jason's there, he can have a petition ready, if they're interested in repairing it that way, if they decide they don't want to go that route, then just try and open it up the best you can.
That's right.
And it's a repair to the district.
Yes, correct. And there's a lot of land in the north that pays towards this. And we've been told, or at least I get it secondhand from Al, that there's some up in here that's tiled into it that's not inside the boundary. So it may mean fairly straightforward annexation to give more land paying. There's a lot of ag land that's gonna help pay for that root.
Well, it sounded like there's been quite a bit of tile removed and stuff that needed to be looked at, 'cause I'm sure there's been a lot of tile put in.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
So even that, even whatever they said, we probably should be doing an updated own asset.
Yes, yes.
If they're annexed, they can pay prior improvement?
Yes, that is in the code. Here we go, citing the code. That, I know attorneys have told me that, that you can go back, it's rare to, because were they benefiting before?
Yeah, you're correct.
That's, I mean, some of this is called...
How concerned is that?
The extra water is causing people that could, that are not...
Right.
Correct. That's why the benefit is...
So, when you say a repair, you're just gonna go out around these trees with a relay? Right.
Is it my understanding, about ten foot out into that field, and so, yeah?
Get out away from the trees, and go with the solid tile, solid plastic tile. Yeah, yeah, exactly. You're listening to our conversation there.
When you go up there and you visually see, and they see the intake where the pumping water out into the field, and then you see where the main comes through, all this is back there, all these houses, all the trees, and three drainage fields over the top of them, and there's foam line. If there's issues, keep repairing it, it's a particular nightmare, work free, because there's too much of a culvert underneath there. They really don't have to roll out about this now, they have three hours every roll out, and hold the field, and that's what the tile, the tile down.
And be a lot of trips, kind of, and...
So it's really a positive factor way of doing it, on the city side, but, you know, they'll have to go to their next. How Jason will deal with twenty two minutes?
Oh, yeah.
People will be paying for it, and not just the city, but, you know, the city.
Right, right. Yeah.
Have they got the water issue solved for right now, though?
Well, I don't know.
It's a Band-Aid, from what I understand, according to Jason and to Scott. What they've done is they've done enough relief trenches, that the water can be draining out of the yards, and then once it comes out of the basement, it can continue to drain out, and not recycle and go right back in, because originally what was happening...
Pumping it out, it's coming back.
It was keeping right back in, yeah. There's only one yard that I really want to check on, and that's in back of Alan's house that he lives in now. It's on the county road.
Is that the one there?
Um...
I was just wondering how soon we have to get this relief line for the...
The whole yard was, like, on the corner. There was a tile there, you couldn't even see it, across the road to the east on that corner. That intake was totally covered, you couldn't see it. And with, I'm hoping now that after they opened up that west end and did all that down into the pasture, and they had to go, that alley was the only one, from my understanding, that actually had cables.
Right, yes.
Because Brad Gay has their own water. Each individual one has their own water, their sewer, you know, and those were some foam cables that were going through there, so they couldn't trench that alley to relieve that yard. So, when I went through Thursday night on my way to Sioux City, I could see dirt, so it looked like they had made some sort of a trench through there to get it to drain. Now I'm gonna run up there this morning and check on it. I'd like to see that yard, 'cause I, that person, if I was them, I would be incredibly frustrated. I would be. And, kind of on that note, and I know you guys are all in charge of the main problem, but when the main problem gets fixed, I've been trying to find some avenues for the homeowners. They're losing, you know, their foundations. This is post tornado. How many of them actually have their foundations fixed in 2004? Okay, now we're talking twelve years later. So we've got foundation issues, we've got furnaces that have, they probably lost furnaces, hot water heaters, if they have washer and dryers down there. No, I can't find the funding for everything. I can't quite put my finger on the right person here. I know there's foundations out there, and I know people want tax write-ups. And so they have all this money set out, and if you just ask for it, this is the kind of help that they like to do. You don't have to pay the monies back, that kind of thing. So that's my end, that's as an emergency manager, that's how I'm gonna try to help my town out, or my county out. The other one I came up with is the Iowa Rural Development, the USDA. One's a loan. It's one percent interest. They can be repaid over a period of twenty years, and it's a maximum of twenty thousand dollars. So, the other one is if you're over sixty-two, you can also apply for this, and it's a grant, so you don't have to pay that back. The USDA people are willing to come out. The individuals will just call them, they will come out, they will assess, they will figure out what repairs you need, they'll help them fill out the applications. I mean, I'm not doing the work, I'm just trying to find avenues. I'm trying to point them in the right direction.
Are those funds available in lieu of, or on top of, your personal insurance? Sure, household is true.
That I'm gonna have to look into a little bit more, 'cause I don't know how that...
I'm sure they don't have it.
See, and it's not a, it's not a natural disaster, so I can't go through my grants that I usually can write, yeah. So, and the other...
It'll be on the premium, and they'd have to let insurance in.
Only if it's on contents, right?
It could be more.
Okay, and then, other thing is...
I think.
I don't know, I just want to try to...
I know, but they go...
Oh, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Okay, Rick, is this repair gonna get done early, or, I mean, is this something we can get done quickly?
Oh, we can do it quickly, as long as, I think you'll probably want a petition, and it'd probably be a good topic of discussion. Is that tomorrow?
Okay, except...
Yeah. And I'm hoping citizens are there to hear some of this, I would think they would be.
I would think they would.
Yeah, we're coming to the plant seizing, about this guy's field, and then you got ground damages and all.
Well, and right now, we flooded. We have flooded his field.
Yeah.
You know, there's a nice little trench running, you know, pretty much from the edge of his field down towards the river, you know, and it, like I said in one picture, it's just was gushing. Now, maybe that flowed over the weekend, and we haven't got any moisture now. If we get rain, the other thing that hurts the town is, it's under the population of a hundred. Anytime you have a population underneath a hundred, you are just automatically disqualified from so many grants, you know? And being in Iowa, being rural Iowa, and being all small towns, you know, so many small towns, it really hurts. Yeah, yeah. You know, we've got Addison, you know, we've got Hardy, Pioneer, you know, Forty. I don't even know what Pioneer has, but Addison and Hardy, Forty, you know? So, trying to get down funding, or trying to find some grants for them, it's just really kind of a thing.
Well, I think at this point, we're getting ready to begin, Kathy. Will that Jason, for me? You can have a form for them to sign.
Thank you.
Make that a pair.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If time, if there are any times you might worry about it. I think you've got enough good information.
Oh, yeah. Oh, 'cause he can relate the elevations between culverts, and, yeah. And I'll be available by phone if he has some engineering question he wants to ask, so... But he was on, he's the boots on the ground, but he's the guy to be there.
What I'm gonna do on the chronological, I'm gonna write on him, the direction I was standing, the date and everything.
Not a bad idea.
And then I'll get them back to you. How about that?
Good idea.
We have a CD in there, and there's also... Oh, I do have a CD. I had a CD made up, and I also had duplicates made, so that if you individually need, you can refer to this, and then have your individual...
Yes.
All chronological.
Excellent.
Well, we're ready, people.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Quick to this break, if anybody's thinking of...
I couldn't wait for that.
I never even seen you leave.
Oh. That was either that or...
If it's too small, we do see you go by.
Yeah.
We'll depend.
Go through them.
Oh, my heavens.
We'll take a small break, okay?
Yeah, two minutes.
Two minutes.
Are you ready?
Do I listen on, or not?
She'll get a field order, and then she'll come back. It was awesome.
No, it's, it's on.
You did good.
It's on right now.
Is the recorder on?
Yeah.
The table recorder?
I hope it was on in the closed session.
No, it wasn't.
If it did work, it was a little fast tonight, we couldn't get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting for it. We're just taking two minutes break.
Thanks, Rick.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for your help.
We're so glad to be involved down here. You guys are so active and progressive, and, yeah.
We hope to be that way.
Sure. You got, yeah, you are.
I have a chance for these two guys to come back to think of when we figure these out. Which part they'll cost usually for the solar, I mean, gee, oh, that's true.
I want to have a meeting with any of you guys back here. One minute on... Mistress, I've got all this.
He wants to open, he wants to show me my number two.
Nick, who are you?
Party.
Yeah, Nick and... Nick was, he was, he mentioned, 'cause why? Nick and I are having a meeting, hopefully, to talk about what it takes.
Oh, we're putting that with a lift.
Sorry, we gotta talk to him. Okay. Nick was the first guy I called, and he was willing to meet and talk about it.
I think possibly a couple others would be the nostrums, Dwayne and...
I think you got a good one.
You got a good one.
But I think that'd be another one that's down the road. I think we need to ask some of the experts to get a guess.
Exactly. But we need to get a little relief for the other two.
We'd like at least four.
Yeah.
We can, I don't think we can have enough, so we can't.
If you need more, just give me a call. I got a couple people that I wanted to talk to, but...
And I need to talk to Trish too, to get on the agenda. We've got ten, a meeting with Pat, Bill, and Brinkinas this afternoon, and there's ten reclassifications for them to sign. And we're gonna work on four more this afternoon, and we've got the appraisal report for Dean.
We are now back in regular session. And we were, again, before we can let Kathy sit, we need to vote on a motion here. And we had a motion in the closed session, motion A would be to bill the Drainage District. Motion B was no. At this time, we're here to take a motion.
I'll make a motion, A.
You have a motion, second. Motion A. Bruce, the second. Any word session? Seeing none, all in favor? All. Both carried. All right. Sorry we haven't delayed you today.
No, that's no problem.
But you are up.
There's always plenty to do, so we don't have to worry about that. I just, today brought in the first and the second, and I worked on it for something like it. First and second quarter general assistance summaries. The copies that the board members have do have the individual names who are assisted, so I do need those back. Nothing out of the ordinary for either quarter. We did help with burial assistance, utilities, and rental during each quarter for a few folks. The last couple weeks have been busy for utilities rent and things, so I don't know how, how those will end up once we review all of the information. But there's nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, staying within budget, so no concern on any of the line items that we see, so.
Someone will change the first quarter, second quarter, you're sleepy, right? Let me come. The third and service, when they need it.
Okay. Now, a motion into the place and file the reported reports for September and December.
I shall move, make that motion, place on file the reported reports for September 30th, December 31st.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And a position, in case anything, will be back.
Well, six, six months is nearly past, I know. The board had asked to revisit, we, the board approved to reduce hours for one of our full-time case managers to allow her to move from 40 hours to 30 hours a week. And so we're just revisiting that, because we wanted to take a look at that after six months. She is still interested in maintaining that at 30, 30 hours a week. And she's actually been working, I would say it averages 30 hours some weeks. She's a little bit over that. But we did budget, I mean, she's still in the budget for up to 40 hours. So I think as long as she's willing to continue that, it's working well to meet the needs in our office. Because, you know, we haven't rehired anybody, we had no interest when it was posted internally within County Social Services. Though I have had a person since say that they would maybe entertain that if that was going to open up again. But in conversations with Bob Lincoln, the County Social Services Administrator, he's just, you know, hoping we can kind of reevaluate on a monthly basis where we're at. That in part, or primarily being due to managed care transition with Medicaid, and not knowing, you know, how many individuals will continue to serve really at this juncture. Would it make much sense to really hire someone for that position, not knowing, you know, how many individuals we're ultimately gonna be, be serving? And I had asked, when we had that conversation, to really be working closely with our surrounding counties, you know, Wright County had the room to work with some of the individuals that our office was handling. I've talked with both Jen Sheehan, their disability coordinator, who would be my equivalent in Wright County, as far as position, and the case managers. And they, they feel that it's working well, they don't feel it's overwhelmed them. They're glad to, you know, continue to have the capacity to serve as many individuals as they can. So, you know, it's working okay. Am I saying we're not really overwhelmed and busy? No, I'm not saying that, because it is, it's just, and I think everybody's in the same position, you know. CSS, Integrated Care Management, does have a contract with each of the MCOs now. And so that will involve all of us learning, you know, how to prior authorize services, how to document and navigate within their own system. So lots of things changing, lots of things happening right now. So, so, yeah, I'm putting that out to the board again too, you know, that we do have that position. But, you know, it's my recommendation, and Bob Lincoln's as well, to just to continue to evaluate that-
The way you are.
Yep, on a month-by-month basis, until we can, can see how the MCOs will impact, you know, our targeted case management or care management, and what business we'll have.
Well, unfortunately, we have an option where we've got somebody to share that's working out good, you know.
Absolutely.
We have that option.
Absolutely.
It's very fortunate at that way.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think, you know, there, there are a number of counties that are all a part of the regional program. And I think that, you know, that's why we did that, so we all need to be coming together. It isn't just a Humboldt County and Wright County thing, we need to pull in Webster, and-
You think as a 22-county agency, as we are?
Yeah, as 22 counties, you know, how, you know, we have this many individuals that we need to provide services to, and how do we best do that? So continue to work together with, with all of the counties that are a part of that program, and-
So we want to reduce that in six months, then again, or?
Three months.
Three months, or whatever.
What do you think?
Um, as far as our reduction for the 40-hour week to the 30-hour, I would request that that be evaluated again in six months, or sooner if needed. But, because we really have both of those, they're two separate, to do. But really, to hire and train anybody new right now just doesn't make, make a whole lot of sense.
Well, the other side, we don't want to get someone so overwhelmed that they, they all in, didn't really.
Right, right.
What's managed care, April 1 now?
Yes, it's been pushed back to April 1. It's my understanding, though, that the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services has approved, approved for Iowa to do that now. So that was kind of the double-edged sword previously. It's like, you know, they kept changing the date, but they also didn't have federal approval on the plan. And it's my understanding now that that is approved for April 1, so, yeah.
Hey, thanks Kathy.
Okay.
You want to live that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Peggy, other items?
Smart connections, Connor. I put a note in with the items, if you wanted to get, have, can you get you signed up for the meeting? I went off Carl's recommendation from last year, they've got some really good speakers on cyber security, and the panel discussion.
That's for Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, yeah. And it starts at 9:00, so if you need a good room, they do have a block of rooms reserved. If anybody needs that, let me know, and I can sure get you all signed up for it. So I'm signed up already.
Works that out again.
This one is at the Holiday Inn Airport in Des Moines. We used to go to Holiday Inn all the time, but I got that covered, and then they changed it downtown. So, going back home.
I'd like to go, but I don't need room. Just sign me up with me.
All right.
I think I'd go, but I would drive down also, I don't-
Okay. So sign me up for the meeting?
Just the meeting, yeah.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
You're going too, aren't you, Peggy?
What about you, that? That's okay. And then, oh, okay, I'll go off to make me.
Okay, I'll make you.
Yeah, I'll go if I have to.
And that was Wednesday, what's the?
That is April 28th, at the Holiday Inn Airport in Des Moines.
9:00 AM.
Yep, starts at 9:00 AM, and welcome.
I think everybody's signed, if you don't see the capital, I'm waiting for this week, right?
Yep, we've got everybody signed up for that. Stop by the address, we'll-
That is starting later than normal. Didn't notice something else. Starts at 11:00. Yeah. Usually starts at 9:30, it used to start.
That's Wednesday.
Yeah.
Moving back to-
Yeah, we're gonna talk to her, we got one, no, we're gonna meet with everybody.
Stop by the address, please, when you're going around the lieutenant, we'll have cookies.
All right. I talked to Graybreak, he's trying to meet, what's for lunch, about 11:30, quarter 12.
Who is he? Okay, that's what, on him? That's what Janice.
Well, yeah, he's paid for it. You get a sack lunch out there, you know, get a sack lunch, and then you go eat.
Jeff's.
Yeah.
Oh.
Very good, yes. Sexton didn't commit, I didn't see the rest of it. Graybreak finally meets the lobby about 11:30.
That's good, no? Anything else, Peggy?
I think that's it. You want to check to make sure? Oh, okay, um, let's see, I should have signed that. I did find, oh, here's your budget, thank you. Did find a, kind of a description for a sanitarium. Because we never have a description, job description for a sanitarium, because it's been contracted with Spokane County. So I'll have you guys look that over, see if that works well. So counties are very good at sharing information, I can use it as a template, I can align to Humboldt County, so.
You're taking out patients, what, the 11?
To the 11.
All right. Most to adjourn?
That's a little-
All right, we got-
Second one?
Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.